Gardner Edgerton USD two thirty-one candidate forum. I'm Beth Felsky, I am president of the Gardner Chamber of Commerce, and I'm excited to moderate tonight's forum. The Johnson County Public Policy Council comprised of ten chambers of commerce in Johnson County, developed today's questions focusing on business and community issues. We will start with the candidates speaking alphabetically and alternating throughout the forum. We'll begin with each candidate giving an introduction and opening statement for two minutes, followed by a set question Q and A. For each candidate, we'll have one and a half minutes to answer the question, and we'll end with a two-minute closing statement. Due to time constraints, there will be no follow-up questions, formal rebuttal time, or audience participation. Once again, these questions have been predetermined by the Chamber of Commerce and Quoxer, cooperation with the Johnson County Public Policy Council, and have not been shared with any candidate. This evening's event is being recorded on the Johnson County Public Policy Council's website, We ask that you remain quiet for recording purposes. As a reminder, the Gardner Chamber does not endorse candidates, but does provide the opportunity for voters in the community to make educated voting decisions. So we're going to start with introductions. Our candidates for position one are Julie Aldrich, Matthew Garlov, and Melissa Hershey. Julie, we'll start with you. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on the Gardner Edgerton School Board.
Okay, my name is Julie Aldrich. I have been married to my best friend Brian for almost twenty-six years. We have lived in Gardner for twenty-five years as of this week. I'm a mom of four children who have all graduated from Gardner Edgerton High School. I'm a grandma, aunt, and great-aunt of children who are currently attending various Gardner Edgerton schools. I have assisted the Disability Rights Council on changing special education law for seclusion and restraint. I'm a trained education advocate by the Kansas State Department of Education program and appointed to several children throughout the state of Kansas to step in as the role of a parent in the special education process. I have a master's degree also in special education and am a current educator in a neighboring district. I volunteer with various autism and special needs programs without, within the metro area. And if elected, I will ensure that every voice is heard, valued, and validated with dignity and respect for all involved.
Thank you, Julie. Matthew, same question. Tell us about yourself and why you'd like to serve on the school board.
Can you hear what Karen is doing to pick this up?
Um, probably use the microphone, Matthew. It would help probably for the recording.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Beth, and thank you for, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this event. I'm grateful to be here. I'll start by telling you a little about myself. I am a fifth-generation Kansan. I grew up on a farm in Miami County, the youngest of seven children. Neither of my parents attended college, but they encouraged and supported my siblings and I in all of our education. I studied electrical engineering at Kansas State University and went on to earn a law degree from KU. I've enjoyed a rewarding career practicing intellectual property law, and I am immensely grateful for my formal education, and in particular, for the teachers and professors who took an interest in me and made such a difference in my life. As you can probably tell, I feel passionately about the importance of getting a good education, and that is why I'm running for school board. I want to make sure that every youth in our community has every opportunity to receive a top-notch education that will prepare them for success after high school, regardless of where life takes them. My wife and I have five children, three of them graduated from Gardner Edgerton High School, and our youngest two are in high school this year. Generally, we've been very pleased with the education, the quality of the education they've received here in this school district. And I hope that we are, that we all appreciate that we have something very good going here. But I also hope that we're not contenting, that we recognize there are areas that need, that need improvement, and that we owe it to our students to, to focus on those areas and to do what's necessary to make those improvements. And that is the, that is the approach that I will bring to my service on the school board, build on the wonderful, good things that we have going in this school district, but be open and honest about the problems that we have, and when necessary, make the definitive decisions to address those problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, tell us about yourself and why you would like to serve on the Gardner Edgerton School Board.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Melissa Hirsch. My husband and I moved here in 2010 with the explicit intent to start our family, and we grew up in Alayta, and we moved here for the schools and the community. We love the fact that Gardner has one high school in town, and roots for the one high school. That was something that we got to experience when we were enrolled in college at Accra State University, and we love that and came here for that. When I was a student at Accra State University, of course, they are known for their fantastic teaching program, and a lot of my sorority students and classmates were on that teaching path. I was inspired by their passion and how hard they had to work to get through that program to do what they really wanted to do, which is teaching. And they, we always would joke that teachers said they couldn't do what students do, and we can do what teachers do, but we're all doing that now. Because currently, I am a one-to-one nurse for a medical needs student in the Alayta School District. So I am her nurse for her medical needs, as well as I am her parent. Uh, we, uh, I, sorry, pardon. I would love to run this school board because I want to be a reasonable and transparent representative of what the district says and how it conducts its business. I want to have every family feel like the choices that are made that affect them, that they are aware of them, and they understand the gravity of each decision. I am inspired by teachers. I am inspired by this school district. I have two boys. They just not remember team. They haven't done quite well in this. And I want every student to meet their potential, and we need to provide them the best education for them so they have a great opportunity. I'd say beyond whatever that looks like, we're going to put this school here.
Thank you. Now I'm going to move into the question and answer portion of the program. Uh, this question, we'll start with Matthew. As a candidate, what are your top three education policy priority issues? Top three priority issues.
Okay, thank you. I'd say my top priority is, is increasing the academic achievement of our students. So there are many things that I mentioned that I love about this school district that have served our children very well. But there's one thing that is concerning and frankly a little bit embarrassing, and that is, it's just some of the acad, some of the indicators of academic achievement for our, for our youth, for our students. There are several of them, but one of them is, is ACT scores. If you look at the, the average ACT score of the Gardner Edgerton High School students, starting in 2015 through 2024, it has steadily been decreasing. In 2015, it was twenty-three point five, and last year in 2024, that average score was twenty-four, I'm sorry, it was nineteen point seven. So it went from twenty-three point five to nineteen point seven. In addition to that, we have the average ACT score from our high school is the lowest in the area. So the Alayta schools, the Blue Valley schools, Paola, Spring Hill, DeSoto, they all have average ACT scores that are higher than our ACT scores here in Gardner Edgerton. So that would be one, that's going to be one of the top priorities for me. In addition to that, meeting the needs of the disadvantaged and at-risk students would be a priority, a goal in this area that we need to improve.
And Melissa?
Yes, my top three priorities are, of course, number one, academics and academic performance. I attended the Board of Education meeting in August and was thrilled to hear the administrators talk about how they have metrics in place to evaluate our resources that we're using, to use data-based, evidence-based practice for what they are teaching, not just, oh, we, here's the new thing that we got this hold on, here's the new thing teacher, we're going to teach on, but did this actually achieve the goal of enhancing children's reading and math scores? So that is, of course, the reason why we're all here. Um, so it's glad to hear that we're on track with that. Next would be parent and community involvement with COVID and then the additional security measures. You know, you have to show your ID. It does feel like at times there's a disconnect between parents and the school, like we can't get it sometimes. So, um, opening that up and really having people feel like we are all part of this community and this school district. And then last would be safety, and of course, safety of schools is a top priority from not just physical safety of the buildings and the air quality and all that, but of course, it is, it is a sad, tragic, um, state of, of where we are that our schools are, are targets for crazy people. So I appreciate, again, recently they hired a new safety officer for the high school, and I am fully in support of that. We've also added the clicker buttons for staff and teachers. If there is an emergency, it clicks and it's connected into all the systems. So emergency response can be, sorry, I was going to say.
Thank you. And Julie, once again, the question is, what are your top three education policy priorities?
The three priorities are special education. Number one, to make sure that we have highly qualified staff in the place of certified staff. Make sure they are properly trained. Make sure we have par educators that are also trained in the positions, and they are retained. They have to be trained in their positions and stay there. Um, so we have consistency with our students. The second one is student achievement. And we have to make sure our grades, everything is up to par with our neighboring districts. Our test scores are low. We need to get those higher. And the other one is transparency with the board. The board is not a hundred percent transparent. The district's not a hundred percent transparent. We need to ensure that the transparency is there with us, the stakeholders, so that we know what's going on around the district and everyone else.
Thank you. This next question, um, we'll start with Melissa. What are your thoughts on K through twelve education funding in the district? What, if anything, would you change about the budget?
Well, of course, we have a magic wand. Teachers would make as much as lawyers, and they would be appreciated at financial aid in that way. It is a struggle every year. The board just approved the budget this year. Uh, there were new, um, computers just purchased and iPads and all of that. What I appreciated at that meeting again was the feedback teachers were brought in. They got to test out the things and do it. In terms of specific budget items, I will, coming from being in a special needs classroom, I will always advocate for that, that if they can get an increase in the pay and help, as Julie had mentioned, those parents be consistent. Those special needs children, they're high risk for a lot of things, and it's those safety things. So, um, I would, I would advocate for that, that they, if that, that would be a priority for the budgeting. But specifically mine, I have a budget there, but I haven't gone on it. They got through it that time, really.
Thank you. And Julie?
Um, since our budget was recently passed for the year, um, we need to increase teacher salaries to be effective at the same rate as our neighboring districts. We are one of the lowest districts in teacher pay as support staff pay. Um, our other districts, our neighboring districts, the district that I'm employed with, our paras and our substitute staff, everyone is making at least three dollars less than the neighboring districts. We need to get up to that level as everyone else. We need to make sure that the budget includes the same rate of pay around everyone else. Um, the budget also has to include, you know, repairs, technology increases, make sure everything's up to standards, all that, whatever needs to be done, needs to be done, included in the budget, you know? We, we need technology updates. We need school buildings updated. We need everything else. But we also, also need to include our students. Everything has to be student-based, all that. So we need to include that also in the debate.
Good. So when it comes to funding, there have been some interesting trends in Kansas over the last twenty years or so. For most of the last twenty years, uh, the, the amount of money we spend per pupil in Kansas has consistently, for the most part, consistently increased. Even when adjusted for inflation, we have been spending a little bit more generally every year. At the same time, the, the level of proficiency, especially at grade middle school, have either stayed level or they've actually decreased in some cases. So there's this disconnect between increases in spending and levels of proficiency in some of the core subjects that we have, that our students are attending in schools. So when it comes to funding, one of the things that I, I think we need to do is maybe examine how we're spending our money and be, you know, consider how we can be more efficient and more effective in using the money to address some of these core issues by academic achievement. Um, another thing I would point out is, um, when it comes to funding, is that we should just, we should follow the law. So the Kansas Legislature has, uh, has set aside, I think it's over five hundred million dollars, and made it available to school districts specifically for programs that are for at-risk students. And in 2019 and in 2023, the state legislature performed audits to determine how well that money was being spent, and they determined that in both cases, that it's not always being spent specifically for the app, for the students or at-risk, I'm sorry, for the programs or at-risk students. And so we need to make sure, I would like to look, you know, see how our school district is spending that money and make sure we're spending that money according to law.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Julie. The K through twelve education system requires accountability measures for student performance focused on post-secondary success and career readiness. Do you believe the district is meeting expectations for student achievement?
Um, with student achievement, our, since COVID, the learning recovery foundational skills are lacking. Many students have not recovered since post-pandemic learning loss in core subjects. It's critical to adjust the foundational skills and leverage with the use of technology to engage learning. I would support digital literacy and equity that's focused on instruction and foundational skill recovery, supported by transparent, data-driven accountability. So if we need to go back to computerized technology to incorporate that digital learning, to recover all of us lost core values and strengths, we need to go back to that. So, and I know a lot of it is being recuperated in our schools at this time. We need to continue to do that till everyone's recovered. Post-secondary, we're not there yet. We, we need to keep continually advocating and pushing and getting them ready for that post-secondary.
Thank you. Matthew?
Okay, yeah, as I mentioned in my opening comments, that, for me, that should be a priority of the school district. And I want to be perfectly clear about something. We have talented, dedicated teachers who have been doing work. And in the, uh, in the, the, recently, this, the school board passed a budget that I believe included more than a hundred and fifty million dollars in expenditures, if I understood that correctly. And so resources are not really the issue either. It's a question of priorities and policy, and that begins with the school board.
Thank you, Melissa.
Can I have a question more? Time, please, just a second.
Yes. The K through twelve education system requires accountability measures for student performance focused on post-secondary success and career readiness. Do you believe the district is meeting expectations for student achievement?
Absolutely. So I know parents, kids, and teachers all hate routine testing, but this, say, testing children early lets us know where they're at so we can help them build that strong foundation of the basic skills in elementary. I, I know, I've seen it, how hard it is to get little ones six-year-old to assess them, but, um, there are great programs in place to help make sure that children are getting those foundations and we're catching up the ones who are behind. Um, if they get those foundations, they will be able to grow. In terms of how the assessments are targeted at the post-secondary, that is an ever-changing world, as we know, AI is here, that is changing the landscape of jobs quite a bit. Um, if we focus on the basis of the foundations, our children will be ready to grow and sprout in whichever way of the future it looks like. But, um, in terms of, are we meeting the current league? Uh, again, it depends on what assessment you look at. There's ACT scores, there's graduation rates, um, there's different things to look at. I know, as has been said already, everybody slipped with COVID. We need to claw back, and we need to continue to succeed and stretch beyond that. Um, but I don't, I mean, I, we, we could, we can't do that. In terms of, are we meeting expectations, again, Melissa? But you need to look at what subject, what specific metric they're looking at. But I think we're on track. I think we have potential, and I think we can do it.
Thank you. Next question, starting with Matthew. What are your thoughts on open enrollment, allowing non-residents to enroll in USC two thirty-one and other efforts to expand school choice?
Yeah, so I believe that law went into effect this last school year was the first year that it was in effect. To be, um, to be honest, I don't, I think the jury's still out. I don't know if it was beneficial, if it was harmful, you know, for our school district. I would say that my, my thoughts generally on programs like that, if the school choice can be in some circumstances, it can be a benefit to the students. But with any program like that, my approach would be, let's, let's take a look and let's be honest about the results. Is it actually helping? Is it not? Is it doing more harm than good? Um, so that's, so I guess the short answer to your question is, I don't know. We need to, let's, let's wait and see. But let's also be honest about the results. And if it's helping, then great. We can, we can promote it. We can, um, see how we can improve it. But if it's not helping, if it's harming, then we can, we should probably appeal.
Thank you. And Melissa, thoughts on open enrollment, school choice?
Absolutely. I have a lot of faith in our public schools. I think they are going to stand strong even up against some competition. I know when this, um, subject comes up, there are a lot of questions. Different states are trying this. They're trying in different ways. There's differing, um, regulations and such. I would support, if we did go to a voucher type program, I would support that any school or tuition program or receiving, um, government funds has to be susceptible to audits, just like our public schools. So I would want to see more equal ground for them. Uh, but my heart breaks. There was just, um, the other day, a woman on, uh, CFG who posted that her, um, narrative urgent child, it just, it wasn't a good fit for them in public schools. That happens. Every family and every student is unique and different, has different needs. She had two other children who are continuing in the public education system. But man, it would be really nice if she could have some of the funds, the taxes that she pays, go to help her supply that homeschool tuition that she was planning to do and seeking. So I see both sides of it. Uh, as a legislative program we run, needs to be run well with, um, you know, putting that back. I have, how are people going to abuse this and what could the potential flaws be? But I think it could be a reasonable option with the, um, proper measures in place.
Thank you. And Julie?
Okay, for open enrollment, um, I have talked with parents and teachers on this. Um, what I see with open enrollment is a lot of students wanting to come to Gardner Edgerton because of our sports programs, um, especially with the high school, with the football team, the baseball team, those who have won championships. They want to be part of those teams. Um, that's where the students want to come into. That's where the open enrollment says, hey, I want to be part of that team. I want to be part of Gardner Edgerton. So that's where I'm seeing the open enrollment coming in. So Gardner Edgerton's opening those doors for those students, but we're also saying, hey, we have those special needs kids too that want to come in, and our programs are kind of tight on that. Do we have the staff for those kids? Do we have the ability to support those kids? So I see it from both sides, seeing that, hey, we have the sports, we have the athletes. We also have the spec kids wanting to come in. Where, where do we meet all those needs on that open enrollment? So that's where the challenge is. Who do we bring in? Who do we choose? Where do we make that point across? Where, where do we meet them? In the middle? Do we choose to say no to some? Do we bring them all in? That's where we have to talk about a lot further.
Thank you. Melissa, other than funding, what do you see as the greatest challenge facing this school district?
Other than, I think, the greatest challenge? I would say that it's meeting each family and each student and their uniqueness. There are so many, um, there are so many things that our children need nowadays. And we've been relying on our schools more and more to solve different gaps with, um, mental health and things like that. And I think the challenge is, the community, the government, everybody continues to rely more and more on our schools to solve a lot of the problems for society all over. So managing that, managing the whole student, you know, the board is really big on that, managing the whole student, um, how we can do that well, um, how we can do that so that the, one, the kids who are severe behavior and severe, um, behind are only ones getting, getting the needs and help, but those ones who are in the middle, you know? Okay, so the grades are your succeeds and invincibles, but they can succeed even more with just a little bit more help. I think being able to serve everybody, um, well, and all the expectations that have been placed upon the school district, I think that's, that's going to be a forever challenge and, um, something. I know that the staff at, um, uh, at all of our schools is dedicated to giving each child the best. Again, a lot is asked of them every day.
Thank you. And Julie, what do you see as the greatest challenge facing this school district?
Um, the greatest challenge I see in this district is meeting the needs of all our students within the district. Not having to buss them to any other, any other facility outside of the district. Um, that I know for a fact that we are bussing students out to other areas, to other programs that, because we're not able to meet the needs here. We need to hire staff that can support those needs. I know there's challenging students. I, I had one myself. I was two, oh, I had two of them, really, that the district is struggling with, with input from parents, with input from professionals, specialists. Those needs can be met here. So we need to be able to support the needs with a lot of extra supports from the outside sources to be able to keep our students here within the district. That's where I see the challenge.
And Matthew?
Okay, so as I mentioned in my opening statements, my wife and I have five children. For about the last twenty years, we've had at least one child in the school district. And it's interesting, each one of our children, they've had unique challenges, unique needs. Some have been a little bit ahead of the curve academically, and others have kind of needed a little bit of extra help in some areas. And we've witnessed firsthand, um, how the teachers and other professionals in the schools have, have really gone out of their way to help meet the needs of our children. We were so appreciative of that. But it's challenging. And as good and as talented and as dedicated as our teachers, you know, and other professionals are, that, that's a big challenge. That's probably, I think, I might want to, you know, candidates have said here, but that's probably one of the biggest challenges in a school district like ours. It's growing. You have, there's a lot of students, there are a lot of challenges. And I would add to that probably just the evolving influences of society. You know, I've known through my kids, I just know there's a lot of parents who can support their children. And there's a lot of children who really struggle because they don't have the support from home. And frankly, I don't have the answers to that. I don't know what the school district does. They're kind of, it's limited, right, that the school district can do to really address that problem. But when you have a large number of students that are not getting support from their parents, that, that's a challenge as well. And so that evolving, you know, evolving technology as well, you know, what do we do with, with AI? How do we use AI to increase, right, to, to, to improve the quality of the education and help our students learn rather than seeing it as a problem? So there's some, so there's some of the challenges that I see.
Thank you. Um, I'm kind of changing gears a little bit. Um, what do you believe is the greatest attribute of the Gardner Edgerton School District? And Julie, we'll start with you on this question. What do you believe is the greatest attribute?
Well, the greatest attribute I have seen in the last twenty-five years is growth. Um, when we moved here, Gardner Edgerton High School was brand new. It has grown. Our athletics have grown. We have won championships since we've been here. Um, it's grown to where we can't hear the football games anymore, which is also fine because it's okay. Um, we have increased elementary schools. We are now getting an early childhood center. Our spec program has grown substantially. Um, we need to continue that growth. That's what I see. We, we just need to continue what we have and just keep it going. That's what I see.
Thank you. And Matthew?
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, there's a lot of good in this school district that we really appreciate. For me, the greatest attribute hands down, it's, it's the teachers. It's the talented teachers, the dedicated teachers. I can name you the teachers who have been such a blessing to, to my family, to my children. I'm so grateful for them. I will forever be grateful for them and all the work that they did. They care deeply. They look so hard. They're so dedicated. So hands down, they're the best. One of the things that I've learned, I've worked with some, some very talented leaders over the years, and one of the things that I've learned is that talented leadership, a good talented leader recognizes that the people are the greatest asset of any organization, and that they'll, they recognize that the best solutions, the best answers don't just come from the top, so to speak. They come from everywhere in the organization. And in a school district, that means that it's coming from, you know, the, the teachers. They're going to be one of the best sources as we, as we tackle these problems, as we try to overcome the challenges we've been talking about. Some of the greatest solutions, the answers, they're going to come from our teachers. We need to be willing to listen to them, to empower them, and to put them in a position where they can help us tackle these problems that we're facing.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, can I ask you a question? Greatest attribute of the school district?
Uh, was that?
Gardner Edgerton Schools. Gardner Edgerton Schools, specifically, okay. Well, first, I want to start with, of course, the teachers, and I want to expand that beyond to all of the staff. You have, uh, speech therapists, occupational therapists, our maintenance staff, our, um, food service staff. So many people are involved in the logistics of getting our children in, teaching them, and getting them out safely and gracefully. It is, again, a blessing that I get to see, um, from the inside my classroom every day. It's part of my job. It's really cool. Um, I would also say our community, um, Gardner Strong, uh, when the Aspen Creek situation occurred, everybody pitched in, churches, businesses, people are.
everybody pitched in, churches, businesses, people, a lot of our school staff, Dr. F was out there, was able to bring some boxes that were left over from moving things. So it's definitely all of the people that make this work, which includes our teachers, all of the staff and our community. It's, it's really awesome. I'm so proud to be living here and be part of it.
Thank you. This will be the last question before closing statements. What makes you uniquely qualified to serve on the board and differentiates you from your opponents in this race? We'll start with Matthew.
Thank you for the question. So as I mentioned earlier, for the last 20 years or so, we've had at least one child in, in the, in school, and we've dealt with all kinds of different unique challenges with each one. So, and we still have two in school right now. And so we've, we've, we've experienced firsthand from a parent's perspective, kind of how to help each one of these children in the school. We've seen how the school has catered to their needs. We've experienced what the school has to offer. In my opinion, some of the best things that the school district has to offer. So we've seen that, we've seen that firsthand. In addition, we have, our older ones are now in, in college. And so we've seen how their high school education, right, prepared them for college, maybe some things that need to be improved a little bit, some things, some areas in which they were not ready. And so we've had kind of a front row seat in, in kind of this educational experience for our children. They've gone through the school, school system and are not into college. And so I think that kind of gives us a, kind of a unique perspective. I would add to that that in my professional career, I've worked with individuals, professionals from all over the world. Really, we have to pull people together, we have to get people to come to a consensus, we have to solve difficult problems. And I think that that experience will serve me well on the school board because we have to, we have to tackle some difficult challenges, right? And we have to, we have to pull people together from the different points of view, with different, you know, different opinions. And ultimately, we have to come to a consensus that's going to be, that's going to benefit the school district in this area.
Melissa?
Yeah, so I think what uniquely qualifies me is my experience with a lot of the service stuff that I have done. I have served on a number of committees when I was at the Narvita Center. I was part of the National Union as a union rep. I was also the chair of the National Corning Council. That was awesome. That was a lot of work. And not a fun experience as you were gathering issues from different agencies regarding safe working conditions and all that. You had to compile that data, you had to sort through, what was somebody just having badly attempting, and what is like an actual safety concern? And the actual, and then you have to sit across the stage from each state lawyer, which a bunch of us were sitting there. It was an interesting, difficult thing, but I, I love the experience I gained in that, having to work through difficult issues and again, sorting out what, what is a real complaint and what's an actual issue, which I think is important. We all know there's a lot of talk that goes on. CMG's always happened. But I believe that my experience in my service and, again, being in a classroom every day, seeing what teachers and staff have to, have to do each other day also lends towards that.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, my uniqueness, I'm going to bring it all full circle. I'm from Minnesota. I'm from the Twin Cities. I co-founded a nonprofit organization for adults with disabilities to become professional visual artists and performing artists globally. It started in the state of Minnesota, it went national, and it went global before I left the organization and moved to Kansas. Because of my husband's two children from his first marriage that I adopted, I learned a lot from adopting them. I learned a lot more when I adopted our two grandchildren. They sent me back to school to become an advocate, to become their voice. I went back to school. I have a master, I have a bachelor's degree in psychology, as in applied behavior analyst in psychology. I have a master's degree in special education. I'm a special education teacher. I'm an advocate with the state of Kansas. I help special needs people throughout the state, throughout the community, throughout the metro area. I do a lot with special needs. That is my lifeline. That is my bread and butter. That is everything I do. That is my uniqueness. That is what sets me apart from everyone else.
Thank you. Well, now heading to closing statements from each candidate, and we'll begin with Melissa.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to get to share about myself and what my hopes are for being able to serve the community in this way. I'm being honored with your vote. I believe that I am a reasonable person, is very approachable. I love talking to people. I love solving problems. That's what I do. And I have served in many different factions and I would love to serve in this role for our community. I'm very proud of our community and I'm excited to see Gardner continue to grow and succeed.
Julie?
Melissa, too. So with my bachelor's degree, I'm an applied behavior analyst. I find patterns. I solve problems. That is what I do all the time in special education. So that is what I do. I'm trying to solve problems. So I would like to do that with the board, on the board, is find where patterns are and find them, solve them. If they're not solvable, find out what's going on and find a solution to that problem. That's what I'm here for.
And Matthew?
Okay. So when I was in college, I volunteered at a local elementary school, just reading with kids and things like that. And ever since I've been in college, I've been involved with youth in one way or another. My wife and I both coach Little League. We have, you know, I've been involved in scouts as a scout leader, many campouts and I had adventures with the scouts. I'm involved in leadership and teaching in my church. We love, my wife and I love working with the youth, serving them, preparing them to have wonderful lives. And so I have a passion for that. So in addition to my passion for education, I have a passion for that. So for me, this is really all about the students and preparing them for the future. And one more thing I would like to add to that is, and I think we all agree on this, but this is not a political decision.
Right.
When it comes to setting policy and making, making decisions, right, I'm not willing to promote or reject anything simply because it aligns with or does not align with a particular political, right, political policy or political platform, right? That is, that is not what this is about. This is about the students. Every single decision will be about what will be best for the students in this district. So I appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation in the Gardner Chambers Candidate Forum. Really appreciate it and also appreciate your willingness to serve the community. Thank you to everyone who's here tonight and also those who are viewing the recording. I'd like to remind everyone that advanced voting begins October 25th and election day is Tuesday, November 8th. For more candidate information and candidate questionnaires, you can visit www.votejoke.com. This concludes the candidate forum for position one. Thank you.
The election's number four.
Oh, sorry. Number four. I'm a habit of the report.